On six thirty and I call this meeting, a special budget meeting to order. We'll have a moment of silence. All right, to introduce our school board members and to make sure that everybody's audio is working. Dr. Kate A. Cuff.
Kate A. Cuff, Jack Jewett District.
Mr. John O. Alcaro.
John O. Alcaro at large.
Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rybana District.
Mr. Dave Ober.
Dave Ober, Whitehall Magisterial District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District, and Mr. Angel Pelkey.
Angel Pelkey, Student Representative.
All right. Our first item on the agenda for this special meeting is the funding request presentation by our superintendent, Dr. Haas. Dr. Haas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Page. And so just a quick mic check. Can you hear me all right? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so I'm just gonna jump right in. Okay. Good evening, members of the board, colleagues, students, families, and community members. Thank you all for joining us here this evening to hear about our draft funding request for the next school year. The theme of our 2020 State of the Division Report was "A Time Unlike Any Other", and that certainly encapsulates what this last year has been. Everyone I know is exhausted, at least emotionally, from the constant challenge of adjusting to so many circumstances that are outside of what we consider normal and what we want to control. History has shown us, though, time and again, that adversity can produce the extraordinary. It is in times of trial that we witness exceptional acts of courage, dedication, resilience, and ultimately triumph. We have learned so many lessons over the past year that will make us stronger as a school division. There have been countless all hands on deck moments in the last year, and we came together while apart, and we collaborated, and everyone contributed to make us stronger than we were before. We have explored innovation and discovered tools and solution that will improve the future of education. In the face of adversity, we have been resilient. One of the most critical responsibilities we have right now to ensure our continued progress is creating a spending plan that will meet our children's needs moving forward. Tonight, backed by a host of amazing staff who have collaborated to draft this request, I am pleased to present to you our school board a balanced draft funding request for the 2022 fiscal year. And I want to name our Fiscal Services Department and our Communications Department by name because they have individually contributed so much. Maya Kumazawa, our Director of Budget and Planning, Jackson Zimmerman, School Finance Officer, Dan Chipman, Senior Financial Analyst, Stephanie Clark, Senior Budget Analyst, Rita Dean, Management Analyst, Anita Moore, Management Analyst, Liz Perkins, Management Analyst. And our Communications Department, Phil Giaramita, our Strategic Communications Officer, Jennifer Butler, Strategic Communications Analyst, Lauren Hunt, Web and Social Media Specialist, and Helen Dunn, Legislative and Public Affairs Officer. I also want to thank Chris Gilman. He's our Coordinator of Research and Program Evaluation, and Jen Sublett, our Director of Professional Learning. And of course, I cannot really accomplish anything alone, and I especially enjoy having such a strong cabinet to work with. And we all know them by name, and they are here tonight. Members of the board, you are acutely familiar with our Horizon 2020 Strategic Plan, which we launched in 2013 to guide our actions and support for decision-making for a term of seven years now. This past fall, under Dr. McLaughlin's leadership, the school division began the process of creating a new strategic plan to carry us into the future. Our first step in this process is actively underway, and that involves collaborating with a broad range of community members representing diverse personal identities, professional expertise, and life experiences to design our division-wide portrait of an Alamo County Public Schools learner. In turn, this portrait, along with an in-depth current state analysis, will serve as our guide as we build our new strategic plan, which, among other results, will provide all of our students with an educational experience that prepares them to be lifelong learners and to make positive contributions to society both now and in the future. We anticipate presenting a new strategic plan to the board in late May or early June. Just as our strategic plan guides our actions and supports our decision-making, so must our equity mission. As a division, we have committed ourselves to the pursuit of equity and inclusion. The work that supports our equity mission, such as our anti-racism policy and its portfolio of projects, is meant to pervade every aspect of our system to shift the way we do business, affecting our values, structures, and behaviors. On a cyclical basis and through a strategic approach, we dedicate immense effort to identifying and prioritizing the needs of Alamo County Public Schools' students, employees, and families, determining how best to meet those needs and ultimately deciding how to allocate funds to support high-quality teaching and learning for all. In so many ways, this past year has been a year unlike any other. Even our annual budget cycle has seen some changes. For example, this year, we aligned some of our processes with local government, a shift we found to be very effective. And I must say, we thoroughly enjoy the collaboration of County Executive Jeff Richardson and his team with local government. Also, as you can imagine, our community engagement efforts looked a little different this year. We have reached out to the community, including internal and external stakeholders, through a host of virtual community events, check-ins, forums, and community conversations, particularly around the topic of pandemic recovery. And we have received a lot of valuable and constructive feedback, not limited to pandemic recovery, rather expansive to rebuilding our system better than before. The budget we are presenting tonight truly is a reflection of the insights, ideas, and priorities of our community. But we are not done yet. As our budget process is an annual cycle, we will continue to seek, evaluate, and implement feedback on our journey toward continuous improvement. When we began the budget development process last September, we discussed these five goals summarized on this slide, and you agreed that we would use these as guiding principles for the budget process. We revisited these goals recently during the January 28th work session and discussed how our preliminary scenario for the budget either aligned or did not align with our budget goals. We believe that this draft funding request adheres to these budget goals, and we will continue to check our alignment with them as the budget process moves forward. Well, it was inevitable. At some point, we knew we'd have to talk about numbers, and here we are. And it's good news. The revenue outlook is very positive. We are projecting recurring revenues of $205.8 million, which is an increase of $12 million over the current fiscal year. A majority of this change is the general fund transfer from local government, which is increasing as a result of higher real estate assessments and other local tax revenues that, to date, have been impacted by COVID-19 less than anticipated. And this is where I always turn to our Alamo taxpayers, the majority of whom do not have children in our schools. And I thank you for your support of the common good of public education in Alamo. I also thank our Board of Supervisors for your prioritization of funding public education in Alamo as our system is a major asset to our county, especially to the families who enroll their children in our schools and entrust us with their educational needs. Thank you. We are also seeing a significant increase in state revenues, largely due to the "hold harmless" provision for enrollment in the state budget and positive sales tax projections for next year. As you know, in response to COVID-19, we realized a reduction in the local government transfer in the current fiscal year. Accordingly, we cut our expenses and adopted a budget for fiscal year '21 that included nearly $10 million less from local government than we had originally expected. As we look toward next year, however, we anticipate an increase in the local transfer of 5.2%, which equates to almost $7 million over the current level of funding. While that will not put us at the level where we were before the pandemic, we are certainly headed in the right direction. Similarly, we faced a reduction in funds from the state in response to the pandemic. We anticipated that state revenues would decrease by $5 million in the current fiscal year from $57.8 to $52.8 million. Consequently, we cut our expenses in fiscal year '21 by $5 million. As it turns out, however, we have learned that state revenues will not be cut in fiscal year '21 and that we will receive the full $57.8 million in this fiscal year. Since we have already cut our current expenses by $5 million, we anticipate that this unexpected funding, which is represented here by the blue triangle, will add to our fund balance. And we'll talk more about that shortly. Looking toward next fiscal year, we are budgeting an increase from the state of nearly 10%, which is an increase of $5.2 million over fiscal year '21 adopted budget. This increase brings us just about level with our pre-pandemic funding. With an anticipated recurring revenue increase of $12 million, we are presenting you with a balanced funding request for fiscal year '22 that includes $12 million in new expenses. While we are thrilled to be able to present a balanced request, it is important to note that we continue to have unmet needs, which we will discuss throughout the upcoming budget work sessions. Should revenue or expenditure assumptions change, we have identified and prioritized areas to which we would allocate any additional funding. But our goal will be to stay balanced throughout the process. Scattered throughout the remainder of the presentation this evening, I'm going to take the opportunity to highlight a few of our employees. I call them tonight "profiles in excellence". The first is Terry Tomlin. Terry was born and raised in rural Alamo County. Despite living in the same house for her entire childhood, she attended seven different county schools as the district line shifted over the years. Terry found some continuity, however, in her role as Monticello High School's nurse, a position she has filled for 17 years. Throughout her career with Alamo County Public Schools, Terry's focus has been on her students. On a daily basis, she connects with Monticello's students and staff to make sure their medical information is up to date, but also just to check in and make sure they're doing okay. Terry pointed out that during the pandemic, the daily responsibilities of school nurses have grown to include coordinating pandemic plans for their schools. In this time of ever-evolving information, our nurses have formed a network to share COVID-19 updates and resources. "The nurses in the county are so good and bring so many different talents to the table," Terry said, adding that "this has been vital to the creation and tailoring of plans to meet each school's needs." As Terry explained, our school nurses are no longer Monday-through-Friday employees. They are on standby at all times for contact tracing. As designated infection control officers for their schools, our nurses are communicating with their school principals, athletic directors, our safety and wellness program coordinator, the ACPS COVID-19 coordinator, and the local health department contacts on an as-needed basis, including at night, on weekends, and even over the holidays. We could not do the important work of continuing to educate our students through this pandemic without the dedication of school nurses like Terry. Thank you, Terry. And now, back to the budget. Now, earlier, we talked about our inputs or our revenue. Let's talk about outputs or expenses. Nearly two-thirds of our increased expenses in the coming fiscal year represent an investment in increasing compensation for all of our employees, teachers, classified staff, full-time and part-time. The second-largest portion represents almost a quarter of our increase and addresses restoring areas that we reduced last year, both instructional and operational. While we cannot simply restore all of our past cuts, we have identified the most strategic restoration areas to address in order to continue to improve and strengthen our school division. And here, we have listed the primary drivers of our increase by category. Now, this isn't new information for you, so I'll be brief. I'll talk a little about raising our minimum pay rate and proposed salary increases this evening, and we'll address all of these items in more detail during upcoming work sessions. As always, you can review a full itemization of our expenditure changes, complete with explanations, in Section A of the Budget Book. I'm going to share another employee's story here, and I have to ask this question. What is a cook supposed to do with a 100-pound crop of student-grown sweet potatoes? Maybe some sweet potato fries, mashed sweet potatoes? Those are the obvious choices, Cindy Tishner thought. But what about a smoothie? And that's what she set out to do. In the end, Cindy created a sweet potato and yogurt smoothie, and reportedly, it was a hit. The kids loved it. Cindy has been preparing delicious and nutritious meals for Alamo County students for 24 years, initially at Burley Middle School and then at Meriwether Lewis, where she has served since 2000. This school year, to help us meet student needs, Cindy is helping coordinate the cooking, packaging, and delivery of 150 to 200 student meals per day at Woodbrook. Though the landscape of learning has changed due to the pandemic, Cindy and her colleagues in the Child Nutrition Program still strive to provide meals that taste good and help the students feel good, no matter where they are learning, she said. When our conversation with her shifted to raising our minimum wage, Cindy shared some compelling thoughts. "It would raise the morale of the department," she said. "Kind words are great," she explained, "but when you can give someone money that will help benefit their life, that goes a long way." Cindy also acknowledged what a great and dedicated team of employees she works with and added, "It would keep people here, and that's what we want. We want to attract the best employees, and when we're lucky enough to hire employees like Cindy, we want to keep them." Now, in support of our second budget goal, which includes providing a salary plan that supports a competitive position and reflects market adjustments, we are committed to increasing our minimum wage to $15 an hour. We have structured this increase to occur in phases. In fiscal year '22, we have allocated approximately $4 million for Phase 1 of this plan. Phase 1 raises the pay scale for both full-time and part-time regular employees, including those who are eligible for the Virginia Retirement System, or what we call the VRS, and those who are not. It brings the VRS-eligible scale to a $15 minimum hourly pay rate, and Phase 1 funds decompression in pay grades 4 through 12. So those employees would benefit as well. Future phases will increase all employees to a $15 minimum hourly pay rate. Currently, nearly 18% of our workforce earns less than $15 an hour. And I have to name these employees: Teaching assistants, food service associates and managers, custodians, special education assistants, transportation assistants, bus drivers, there are relative few at this point, but some, office associates, EDEP teachers and assistants, library media assistants, general maintenance workers, school security assistants, and in-school suspension assistants, and then couriers. Raising our minimum wage demonstrates a significant and meaningful investment in our employees. It's a strategy that will help us remain competitive with our local market and ensure that we can recruit and retain high-quality staff. And speaking of high-quality staff, this is Ben Ajakwa. Ben began his journey with Alamo County Public Schools in 2014 after emigrating to the United States from Ghana. Having been a high school math teacher in Ghana, Ben knew he wanted to find a position serving schools here in the United States, and we are so fortunate to have him on our team. As a custodial supervisor, Ben oversees custodial functions at eight of our schools, which is already a monumental task in a typical school year. This year, Ben and his staff have had to make major adjustments to keep schools clean and safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. Ben and his crew of custodians open their schools at 6:30 each morning in order to spray mist into every nook and cranny of the building with sanitizer. Their top priority each day, as they carry out our cleaning and disinfecting protocols, is to ensure that students and other employees have a safe and clean environment in which to learn and work. The vital work of our custodial crews is at the core of our school division's ability to offer high-quality teaching and learning, now more than ever. When we spoke with him in advance of this presentation, Ben said, "Our employees are the only asset we have." Yes, our employees certainly are our most valuable asset. Ben and his colleagues, who are classified as essential employees, are among those who would benefit from an increase in our minimum pay rate. One of the major struggles building services faces is filling vacancies throughout the school year, as do our Departments of Transportation and Child Nutrition. I believe that's an issue we can significantly improve by offering employees like Ben better starting pay. And let's do two in a row. After joining Alamo County Public Schools as an EDEP teacher at Yancey Elementary School in 2015, Jessica Lundgren transferred to Red Hill Elementary School after Yancey closed as a school, and she stepped into the role of teaching assistant. As a TA, serving students with disabilities, Jessica strives to build a relationship with each student. As you can imagine, this has become even more challenging as schools adjust their schedules to keep students safe during the pandemic. This year, Jessica's focus has been on helping students adjust to new environments while working to identify and address the various emotional and physical needs of her students. "It's a team effort," Jessica pointed out, as she commended the collective work of her colleagues to help meet the needs of each individual student. "Even though it's stressful," she said, "they're doing the best they can to make sure kids have the best virtual learning experience." Despite current challenges, Jessica aspires to go back to school and continue her education so that she can learn more about working with children with behavioral needs. Jessica is the kind of employee we want to keep, the kind of employee we want to invest in. As someone who would be impacted by the increase in our minimum pay rate, she advocated that increasing our minimum wage to $15 would ease some of the stress of our full-time employees who struggle to make ends meet and suggested that anytime we can help an employee be their best self, we are, in turn, helping them provide a better experience for our students. Just as raising our minimum wage is a meaningful and strategic investment in our workforce, so are salary increases. When COVID-19 wreaked havoc on the economy and we were faced with a significant drop in revenues, our employees went without raises we had planned to fund in the current school year. They went without, yet they went above and beyond in every capacity in order to meet the needs of our students during a very challenging time. It is time now for us to deliver on those raises, not only to help us remain competitive, but simply because we value our employees. Our compensation strategy for fiscal year '22 includes a 2% salary increase for classified staff. This means that the employees at the lower end of our pay scale will see a wage adjustment to $15 or more per hour and will receive the 2% pay bump on top of that. For teachers, so far, we have budgeted a 3% salary increase. However, due to adjustments and other compensation-related areas, it is possible that we may have extra funds we can use to further boost this raise for teachers. We are continuing discussions about compensation with local government now, and we plan to bring this back before the board during the second budget work session on February 25th. Now, you might say that Hope Paige Ross has transportation in her veins. When Hope entered kindergarten at our own Greer Elementary School, her father was her school bus driver. A few years later, her mother joined Transportation Services as a bus driver. Combined, Hope's mom and dad boast more than 50 years of experience driving for ACPS. After serving the school division for seven years as a teaching assistant, Hope made what seemed like a natural transition in 2012 to transportation, where she drives a van serving special-needs students. "All I've ever done is work with children," Hope said. "Many with special needs, and I love it." That love was palpable as Hope shared a story of a student with non-verbal autism who joined her route in the fourth grade and finally, by high school, began greeting Hope by name. That was a big milestone, Hope shared. "That's the kind of reward that sustains Hope, who starts her full day of driving a little after 5:00 a.m. with two morning routes followed by a midday route and then an afternoon route. In a single day's work, our van drivers easily drive 250 to 300 miles across our school division." When asked about the impact of a $15 minimum wage, Hope shared that some drivers in transportation still find it necessary to work two jobs in order to make ends meet, and she thinks a $15 minimum wage could alleviate some of that pressure. As you know from previous presentations, our fund balance is currently quite high. About $5 million of the total is coming from the unexpected funding in the current year from the state, which I talked about earlier. We also realized a lot of savings in fiscal year '20 because local government announced in the spring of 2020 that they were going to decrease the local transfer for that year. We cut back on spending accordingly, but after fiscal year '20 ended, local government transferred the original budgeted amount. So we have some one-time monies at our disposal and some higher priority needs. Our plan is to appropriate about $5 million of our fund balance in fiscal year '22. About $800,000 of that appropriation is dedicated to recurring expenditures, and this is a strategy we implement every year as a balancing tool. The majority of our one-time monies will go toward funding learning recovery, which we'll talk more about in just a moment. The remainder is allocated to transfers, contingencies, and reserves, as we expect that there may be programs that you'd like to fund after the budget. after the budget development process has come to a close. We are directing the majority of our fund balance allocation and over 70% of the CARES funding we will receive to support learning recovery. While much of what we know about learning loss that students have suffered is qualitative or anecdotal, at this time, we do have some high-level quantitative data to share with you that resonates with some of our concerns around learning loss. For example, if we look at the average end-of-course grades for our high school language arts classes over time, we find that students earning As are continuing to be successful, but we're seeing students who were previously earning Bs and Cs drift down into Ds and Fs this school year. At the middle school level, we looked at the Measures of Academic Progress or the MAP Assessment, which is designed to measure students' academic achievement and growth over time. While student performance on the reading MAP Assessment this year is not particularly concerning, what we see with this data is that in the current environment and circumstances, we were unable to assess all of our students. From last fall to this fall, the total number of middle school students we were able to test declined by 11.1%. What's more, if we follow the sixth and seventh graders we tested last fall, we find that we tested 14.5% fewer of them this fall. This means we lack the data to help evaluate the reading growth of nearly 300 of our current seventh and eighth-grade students. And at the elementary school level, we took a look at our phonological awareness literacy screening, or PALs data, which is a state-approved tool we use to assess our youngest students' knowledge of literacy skills that are predictive of future reading success. From last fall to this fall, not only did we see a decline in the participation in the assessment, but the results also indicate a loss of learning for first and second-grade students, both year-over-year and by cohort. I selected these three very high-level indicators for the board to see as indicative of academic learning loss. These are concerns that we have here in Alamo. There are also concerns across Virginia and across the nation. Right now, in Alamo County Public Schools, all of our schools are completing what we call "mid-year common assessments of student learning" that are based on grade level and subject area curriculum standards, usually, and most often, the Virginia Standards of Learning. We have an annual process of analyzing the test data broken out by demographic groups with school principals. We call this the "mid-year review." This year, due to enhanced collaboration across schools, I've been informed that teams of teachers, and I'm very proud of them, have developed common pacing guides and mid-year assessments with greater fidelity than in the past. Therefore, I am looking forward to seeing their results so that we can continue to get a better understanding and a better handle on learning loss. More importantly, teacher teams are in the process of analyzing student results to make adjustments in their instructional planning going into the spring, while at the same time deciding how to offer extra time and support to students. This work is at the core of what we call the Professional Learning Community approach we espouse and constantly strive to embed in our school system. I know from my own past experience as a teacher and school administrator that teaching and running a school are hard enough during regular times. It is hard work done with the labor of love. It is expectedly much harder work in the face of adversity. When no matter how hard a teacher tries, relationships are often difficult to forge, and learning is difficult to impart when our educational environment has been turned upside down and tried-and-true methods no longer apply. I am proud of our teachers, our educators, for staying the course. Their grit is inspiring. While quantitative results are not what they might have been during normal times, the strength of our educators and support staff's work will show in that our school community has stayed together and that families still know our teachers. They hold them in esteem and trust them. That is powerful, and it gives us something to build on. It is a root, if you will, to plant and grow moving forward. Speaking of our teachers, Christopher Howell didn't always dream of being a teacher. He actually wanted to be a doctor. Incidentally, I'm glad, Christopher, that you're a teacher. He even started his undergraduate studies on a pre-med track. It was time spent volunteering at different tutoring and summer programs that lit the spark and helped Christopher realize that he wanted to make a different kind of impact on the community. "Christopher started his career with Alamo County Public Schools five years ago at Woodbrook Elementary School. I knew it was the place I wanted to be," he said. Whereas in a normal school year, he would be co-teaching with a multi-age class of fourth and fifth graders, Christopher is teaching a smaller group of fifth-grade students virtually this year. He laments some of the ways the pandemic has affected students' experiences, especially the loss of conversation and interactions that used to occur naturally between students in the classroom, in the cafeteria, and on the playground. "It's never been more important to implement active listening in the classroom," Christopher stressed, "to help foster that critical sense of community." "The only tool you have to really connect with them right now," he said, "is listening to them and giving all of the kids the opportunity to speak up and voice their opinion, especially if they are talking about something that it takes a little bit of courage to speak up about." As we all know, these last many months have been greatly impacted by COVID-19, but also by our recession and civil unrest, the types of crises that seep from the outside world into our classrooms. This past November, Teaching for Tolerance, or Teaching Tolerance magazine, featured an article that Christopher wrote titled, "To Sustain the Tough Conversations, Active Listening Must Be the Norm." In that article, which offers tips to help students truly engage with one another in class, Christopher writes, "Too often, our shared discussions in society and in school include a right and a wrong side, a red and a blue side, no gray area for nuance. That's new classroom. Building a strong foundation of the basics, listening to one another, and communicating with grace will allow our community to sustain the tough conversations when they come up for us, whether remotely or in person. This work for classroom culture is critical, and it's never too late to begin." Wow, we are so fortunate to attract teachers like Christopher. While I would always prefer to make a plan before committing to solve a problem, I felt that we had no choice but to commit to the recovery of our students' well-being and then begin the process of figuring out how to do it within the context of Alamo County Schools and our community. So, in late October, while we were still planning and fine-tuning our returning-to-school programming, I established a series of listening opportunities with our teachers, families, and students to begin getting their perspective on how things are going and what ideas they have to help us rebuild, moving toward the 2021-22 school year. And I'm so grateful to all of our teachers, our educators, support staff, families, and students for participating in those opportunities. We learned so much. In January, I assembled a learning recovering steering team, and I asked our Director of Professional Learning, Jen Sublet, to lead that team. It is composed of three subgroups that are focused on academic recovery, social-emotional learning recovery, and mental and physical health. Informed so far by research, feedback from community conversations, and mid-year review data, the steering team has identified a three-part process to address the adverse impacts of COVID-19 on learning. The first step is geared toward relief. This is where we are right now, and it involves ensuring that schools have the urgent resources they need to provide effective virtual and hybrid instruction. This summer, we will begin implementing our second step, recovery plans, which involve investing strategically in students and schools, and I hope, our community partners, in order to begin to make up lost ground, especially in the area of physical and mental well-being. This recovery phase will carry into the 2021-22 school year, during which we will also launch the rebuilding part, the third part of the plan. Rebuilding involves redesigning education to focus on three things: nurturing the whole child, balancing cognitive with social-emotional skill development, and ensuring that every child has access to the conditions and resources needed to enhance their learning and development. The overarching purpose of our learning recovering steering team is to develop and coordinate a comprehensive range of strategies to support students in pre-K through grade 12, their families, and our educators and support staff as we identify, address, and monitor learning recovery for all students. As the budget development process moves forward, the steering team will continue to develop their recommendations, which the board will learn more about in an upcoming work session devoted to learning recovery. Then, as we approach budget adoption in May, we will determine the funding we will dedicate to learning recovery. Depending on the timing of funds, we may include CARES funding in the adopted budget. We've been allocated $9.8 million in CARES funding, and $6.1 million of that is dedicated to learning recovery. Plus, we are planning to allocate one-time monies from our fund balance to finance learning recovery efforts. Following the budget appropriation, we hope to see the steering team's initial plans come to fruition in the new fiscal year, including, for example, summer programming that is open to all students, expanded offerings for K through 5 students beginning in the fall, and personalized learning plans supported by common assessments to support targeted instruction. I'd like to close by offering a snapshot of what's to come in the budget process, starting with our first budget work session later this evening. This will be the first of three special work sessions we have planned and will be discussing budget assumptions, including the detailed revenue analysis and enrollment projection assumptions. Well, I'd like to thank all of you for your time and engagement this evening and for staying with me with this presentation. I really enjoyed presenting it to you, especially the stories of our employees. I don't want to take any more of your time beyond acknowledging each of you, everyone watching, for your combination of strength, flexibility, your grit this past year, for your trust, for your creative ideas, and your constructive criticism, for your courage and compassion, for your hard work, for doing your part to make us stronger than we were before. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Before we have any questions, I will read again into the minutes a special statement. "The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State Law and Alamo County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. Public comment may be sent to us through the school board's website." We will now have any questions from our board on Dr. Haas's presentation. A very beautiful presentation, and thank you, Dr. Haas.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I really appreciated the presentation and especially the stories of the people. I really appreciate seeing all the hard workers who are making art division what it is. And I also appreciate the level of detail that was offered in that. Like, for instance, thinking about the $15 wage increase, just knowing exactly who makes what there. I really appreciated that. I also, I was wondering if it would be possible for us to get the comments, like the, either transcript, or... I just, I learn better when I read rather than...
Absolutely. You mean my notes?
Yeah, your notes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you. I did have a question about the phases for the increase to 15. So there's Phase One, and then Phase Two. And I was just wondering, in Phase One, the people who would get up to 15 in Phase Two, would they get an increase, or are they just hanging out where they are? And also, what percentage of the 17.8% are in Phases One and Two?
That's a great question, and I'm going to turn things over to Maya Kumazow.
What we mean by Phase One is that we're raising the minimum pay rate for full-time VRS-eligible employees. Having said that, all employees' salaries who are making on the lower end of the wage scale, everyone will be lifted, just not necessarily to the 15 if you're a part-time VRS ineligible employee. So, the next phase would include all employees, so we would be raising the part-time VRS ineligible scale to $15, and that would continue to push up the people who were already at 15 so that they wouldn't get compressed, because we have two different pay scales for those groups, and they have to have a differential between them due to VRS reasons. So, the increase would continue through Phase Two for most employees in that pay grade four through 12 group.
Okay, so just, I'm going to repeat back what I think, what I heard. Okay, so the full-time VRS-eligible would get the bump in Phase One, but the part-time VRS ineligible would get a bump, but not necessarily up to 15 until Phase Two?
Correct.
And then, do you have, even a rough percentage would be helpful, of who's in those two groups?
It is... I don't know a percentage, but it is a pretty small group that's in the part-time VRS ineligible scale. Those are mostly EDEP employees and child nutrition employees who are part-time.
And is there, at the end of Phase One, after that implemented, is there a bottom for them?
Yes. It's 5% below 15. I believe it's about 1428.
Okay, and then, in Phase Two, they'll go from 1428, or wherever they are, between 1428 and 5 to 15? And then people from Phase One will not decompress, and they'll go a little further?
Correct. Yes.
And do you have a timeline for Phase Two?
We don't have a set timeline. I know that as a goal, we would like to get there. We would have to look at future revenue outlooks to really determine the exact time. But I know that it is a priority for the division to move as quickly as possible.
So it wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking at this year necessarily?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt with that. Rose Lunt, Chief Operating Officer, Miss Lee, these are all great questions, very relevant. I just, our HR staff will be here at our second work session next week, and this is the topic is compensation. And so we will go into the compression strategy, but all very relevant questions that we can answer. I just wanted, I was just doing a time check.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there other questions on Dr. Haas's presentation?
This isn't a question as much as a comment, is that I thought that your pieces on the learning loss at all the school levels was extremely powerful and really focuses what the needs are there. And I also think that the choice of Jennifer Sublet to run the learning recovery process and system is a great choice.
Thank you, Ms. Dale Carroll. Any other comments or questions on the presentation?
I'll echo your sentiments, Chair Page. Matt, I know you spent a lot of time on that. You did a good job. I appreciated hearing it, so thank you. I'm excited to know that we have a focus on our employees and also on learning recovery, so. Good job.
Thank you.
To say that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, we know we will take a 10-minute break and then come back for our work session for tonight. So a 10-minute break, we will reconvene at 7:30. Thank you. Our school board work session is called back to order. We will now have our first work session on the budget development led by our staff. Ms. Rosalind Schmidt will begin our presentation. So Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I'm actually going to hand it over to our Director of Budget and Planning, Ms. Maya Kumazawa.
Good evening. My name is Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and I will be facilitating the work sessions for the development of the FY22 budget. Tonight, I'll be sharing with you the technical details behind the draft funding request that Dr. Haas presented earlier this evening. I first want to acknowledge Stephanie Clark, Senior Budget Analyst, who continues to work tirelessly to cost out and build this funding request. Thank you, Stephanie. Here's an overview of the various pieces of the draft funding request that will be covered throughout our work sessions. Today's work session, work session number one will focus on the assumptions or inputs going into the funding request, including revenue and enrollment assumptions. Over the next couple of weeks, we plan on covering the expenditures in the draft funding request in more detail as you can see in this outline. After you've had some time to review the budget document, if you all have any questions about any topic, please feel free to submit them at any time, and we will do our best to incorporate the information in future work sessions, like some of the questions we received around the minimum pay rate. We will also submit written responses to any questions posed by our board members in between work sessions and post them to the website for the public to see as well. Here's our agenda for today. As I mentioned, we'll go over FY22 budget assumptions. Mr. Kirst and Ms. Kastner will present detailed information about our special populations towards the end. After each section is presented that's on the agenda, I will pause for questions and discussion as needed. Does that work for everyone, and are there any questions up to this point? All right. Without further ado, I will jump into our revenue assumptions. As you can see in the pie chart, we receive our revenues from two primary sources, local and state. The local revenues portion mostly represents the transfer from local government. But there are some other revenues that we generate as a school division that is included. The recurring revenue outlook is positive, and our conservative approach to the current fiscal year puts us in a favorable position going into next. We have two primary drivers of the local revenue change. We're currently budgeting for an almost $7 million increase in the local government transfer. This is slightly offset by a decrease in local school revenues of $175,000. Revenues for school building rentals are projected to decrease as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and continued uncertainty regarding building needs. As a reminder, Albemarle County shares 60% of the increase or decrease in available shared local tax revenues with the school division. The majority of local tax revenues are general property taxes. This transfer is increasing as a result of higher real estate assessments and other local tax revenues that to date have been impacted less than anticipated due to the pandemic. I won't spend any more time on this slide since you've seen it already today. I'll now move on to the primary drivers of our state revenue changes. The structure of state revenues and FY22 will differ significantly from previous years. Now I'll attempt to highlight them over the next few slides. This is a summary table of the high-level changes that are impacting our state revenues projection. Basic aid and sales tax are expected to increase slightly together as a group. On the next slide, I'll explain why these items are shown together. Funding that applies enrollment projections are declining. However, these declines are offset by no-loss funding of $2.9 million in FY22. And finally, we're incorporating some state funds to support teacher compensation. In the state's proposed budget, the $546,000 represents funding for a 2% bonus for SOQ positions. We would still see this funding if we did something different, such as the raise that we've proposed in the budget. The 2% bonus is a minimum requirement. This line chart illustrates how the state revenues reflect both decreasing enrollment and no-loss funding. The blue line at the top represents pre-pandemic state projections for our school division. The orange line on the bottom represents revised state projections due to the pandemic. The FY21 state revenues were developed using the FY21 pre-pandemic projection. The FY22 state revenues are developed using the FY22 revised projection. This is the change in budget-to-budget enrollment, and this decrease is reflected across various SOQ funding and other programs. However, the state has proposed a no-loss funding amount to make us whole to the original FY22 projection. In the budget book, you'll see this as a lump sum under incentive programs. Moving on to sales tax. Walden Cooper projects the school age population for Albemarle County each year in order to distribute sales and use tax among the school divisions of 1.125%. These taxes are distributed to Virginia's 135 school divisions. Here's a glimpse of historical sales tax trends. The blue columns represent total Virginia taxable sales, and the orange columns represent ACPS sales tax revenues. You can see that both amounts peaked around FY20, dipped in FY21, and are beginning to increase again in FY22. We're anticipating a significant budget-to-budget increase in sales tax in FY22. Due to the economic uncertainty we were in last spring, our budgeted sales tax revenues were very conservative, and we now know that we will be seeing higher than anticipated revenues in this area. I also show here the basic aid formula so you can see how sales tax is incorporated into the funding. While basic aid is driven by the per-people funding amount, the enrollment projection, and LCI, an increase in sales tax is, will have an opposite effect in basic aid. When we combine both declining enrollment and increasing sales tax, you'll see a decline in basic aid funding overall. However, when you combine these two pieces together, sales tax and basic aid, you can see that the declining enrollment is more than offset, and we are expecting an increase in this category. The final piece of revenue information I plan on going over is our one-time budgeted use of fund balance. Here's a partial snapshot of FY21. This is the FY21 adopted budget compared to our FY21 projected budget, so a revised budget. We anticipate a savings of about $4.9 million in the current year, and we're proposing to bring this forward into FY22 as part of the proposed budget, the total budget. This amount represents one-time funds in addition to the $12 million increase in recurring funding. During the third work session, we will discuss the different uses for these funds. What's not included here is one-time funding from the Federal CARES Act. As we continue to develop our learning recovery plans, we will incorporate CARES Act funding into the budget later this spring. Are there any questions regarding our fiscal year '22 revenues?
Yes. Can you, is the fund balance, is that essentially the money that didn't get spent this year?
This represents the additional revenues that we did not budget for.
Okay.
So we're seeing higher revenues than what we budgeted for in the current year, and we want to budget that into next year's budget.
Just confused about the term and what fund balance actually means because Dr. Haas used it too, so.
Keeping with that same subject, you know, I've never seen the one-time uses out of the fund balance put in a budget directly before. Why is that different now?
Um, we feel that there are some, the timing works out well in the sense that these funds will be available at the end of fiscal year '21. So they would be in our fund balance going into '22. So it makes sense to align those pieces together. And another piece to keep in mind that there's a Board of Supervisors policy about how much fund balance we can carry over from year to year that's limited. So if we go ahead and budget that, it's a way to not carry too much fund balance from year to year if we proactively budget for it.
Thank you. That makes sense. I have just... I, I have just a couple of other questions, but I'll just ask one, that's kind of two parts. I noticed you put up the $175, $75,000 a loss of revenue from our CFA lease and and I, and I think we rightly canceled that on them for the summer. Did they find other permanent or temporary space after we, after we canceled on them? Is that why this has been discontinued going forward?
Before I answer that, that $175 is separate from the CFA piece. That represents general building rental to our community or to organization for the use. But you're right, we did discontinue our agreement. I, my understanding is that they have changed the way they provide those services and no longer need to use our space. I'm not sure any further details behind that.
Yeah, it might, it might be automation on their part.
They approached us and discontinued, and discontinued the agreement. It wasn't us kicking them out, yeah.
I, I just thought because of the COVID, you know, going on over the summer, and it's, it's a pretty intense. I have a feeling they, they automated it, and so that could well be. The other one that was discontinued is the summer feeding program. And do we have any projections at this point? How the Department of Child Nutrition will make up for the lost revenues? And how the workers will make up for the lost hours?
Ask that, the summer feeding program, that's, Maya, help me, that's related to CFA.
Yeah, correct.
Correct, yeah. So those were additional hours. And I think with increased summer programming and other ways, I'm confident we'll have hours for those that are interested in it, but those usually are above and beyond an employee's base hours and those that are interested in pursuing it. But I think we'll have other summer, summer opportunities within our own schools for those staff.
Okay.
But that special revenue program is directly related to CFA.
Oh, 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 that one was, okay, I misunderstood that. Okay, thank you for that. And I had one other one that I will find here momentarily. Oh, if I could. And on page B15, under lottery revenues, I'm assuming that the fewer students who are eligible for the lottery-funded programs is related to the fact that there are about 200 fewer students projected for this coming school year than were projected for the current school year. This is before, you know, we had students not coming in. And, and could you explain the new infrastructure and operations per pupil, because it's now broken out into recurring and non-recurring? And this doesn't have to be tonight. You know, if we want to do this in another meeting, that, that's fine. It's just seems to be structured so differently, and I just wanted to understand that.
Yes, we will certainly get that detailed look of that funding stream to you. All right. If there's nothing else on there, I'll continue. So I'll move on into our enrollment assumptions. I just want to preface this section by acknowledging the many unknowns that remain about what next year will look like. This budget is for planning purposes only, and it's based on the best assumptions that we can make at this point in time. Contingencies are included so that we can remain agile as details and instructional plans are finalized over the next several months. The first piece of data that we have is the number of missing students in the current year. Missing students are defined by the difference between what we originally projected for this year versus who showed up in fall 2020. You can see in the chart that more students are missing in lower grades, particularly in kindergarten, than the higher grades. The second piece of data that we have are results from a survey that we conducted in the fall. The survey was sent out to 933 students who newly transitioned to private school or homeschool. We received responses from 372 students, or approximately 1/3. We asked, how likely are you to return to an ACPS school for the 2122 school year? The data presented here shows the percentage, percentage of students who responded either neutral, likely to return, will return, or uncertain. We call this the range of possible return, or could be viewed as a maximum percentage return. The data shown ends at sixth grade because we just did not get enough responses beyond sixth grade to show a relevant percentage. Based on these pieces of data, we made the assumptions in the below some, in this summary table. We assume that 100% of kindergartners and first graders would return. We assumed a 50% return rate for second grade through sixth grade, and we assumed a 25% return rate for the higher grades. We apply these assumptions to each grade level within each school. If certain classes didn't have missing students, which was the case for some classes, then we use their actual fall enrollment data as the new baseline. You've seen this slide before, so I'll be brief. The primary impact that the enrollment projection has on our budget is the FTE allocation to each school. We're projecting an 800-student increase over the current year. However, when you look at the budget-to-budget projection, we're seeing a 200-student decrease. So when we discuss impacts to the FY22 budget in terms of expenditures, we're seeing a decrease in enrollment. In summary, the table here shows our proposal for adding FTEs in FY22. If you look at the middle column, FY21, you can see that we made cuts in our projected staffing. This means that we increased student-to-teacher ratios in order to reduce our expenditures in the current year. The increased ratios are shown in red. In FY22, moving, following the arrow to the green, we're proposing to restore the student-to-teacher staffing ratios to original levels as adopted in our staffing standards. The ratio restoration results in an overall FTE increase. However, as you saw in the previous slide, we're projecting a budget-to-budget decrease in enrollment, which results in an overall FTE decrease. The net, net impact of these items results in the 2.1 FTE increase. In addition to this, we're proposing to add five teachers as a contingency should we see enrollment levels that are higher than what we project. Due to the way the state funding is structured for FY22 with the no-loss funding, we can't count on additional state funds with increased enrollment like we've been able to in previous years. That's the end of the enrollment section, so I'll pause again for any questions you may have.
Maya, with the students that were missing, how did we try to contact those students? And how many were we unable to contact?
I'm not aware of contacting the students since they're not, technically not registered in our system. But I did mention we surveyed them to see. There were some other questions included in the survey, including the primary one about their return, their intent to return.
Were able to capture the ones that unenrolled, we knew they transferred to a private school, so they were already with us and transferred, or were newly enrolled homeschool. Those are the two groups that we knew who they were. Now, if a family was a kindergartner that we projected to come and did not come, obviously, we don't know who they are. So we did our best to reach those that we had contact information from. Maya, I think you said it was about 900 students that we were able to survey.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I had a few comments. One, in the future, when we're starting a section, would you mind giving us the page number? If it's in the budget book so that I can orient myself, because I find myself kind of scrambling sometimes. I, I see the revenue section, but I don't know if there's the student enrollment things in here, if there, if there is, I have not found it.
Thanks for that feedback.
And then my second comment, which, tell me if this is not the appropriate time, because I don't know if this is going to be a future work session. But I am curious about the enrollment in our schools and the expenditure by school. So the per-people expenditure, and I think I'd asked about this in the last funding cycle, although things got wonky basically right when we were, we were dealing with the budget. I, I would like to see the per-people expenditure, and then I'd have follow-up questions about how we calculate that, because I noticed that like for the center, we say we adopted a budget of 719,000, which would be, I, I don't know how that, so that I'm assuming doesn't include the rent of this, the rental of the space and operational costs that we are putting towards that center. So I guess I just have a lot of questions around that, and I think it might be, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but is it a requirement? It's a S A requirement. So I imagine we have the numbers somewhere, and I guess I'm just really kind of curious because I think it's one way that we can start looking about in, in understanding if there might be inequities that are existing between what we offer certain schools or students, and I guess I just want more depth in that area. If that makes sense.
Yes, and we can also cover a piece of that next week when we do an expenditure overview. We can talk about what budgets show up where.
And I don't want to make you have to do a lot of work without the consensus of the board, but I, I just feel like there's a lot. I guess one piece I'm missing, when I see all this breakdown by school, is a comparison between any of them in any kind of meaningful way that I can process through. So I don't know if other board members are interested in seeing that or not.
I would be. I would refer you just generally as a reference to page G20 to G22. The majority of school budgets are made up by FTEs. And you can see there the school-by-school comparison of that, that resource allocation. So that is a resource is currently in the budget book you could use.
And Maya, I am somewhat embarrassed to ask, but I don't want that to hold me back from learning. Can you please re-explain how we classify these expenses in terms of FTEs? Because that's one of the questions I have, when we break it down by the schools, everything's an FTE. But clearly, we have expenses beyond personnel when we're running a school. And so do we just classify it in FTE, like technology? I see the technology one. Is that truly only income that we are, or things that we are paying to our technology staff? Or does that include the technology itself? Where does the technology itself go into the budget? And if that's a basic question, I'm sorry, but I need to know, so I understand.
So yes, that's a great point. We will cover that. I'll make sure to cover that next week. Of what exactly is included and what is not.
I encourage you all to ask, ask any questions that you have about anything like that. That's, those are good questions to ask.
I had a question about the five FTE teachers. Is, what kind of cushion are we looking for that to cover? Is that like 120 possible more students, or like, how do we calculate that?
It would be roughly about 100 extra students.
100, okay.
If I could just clarify on your, I think it was your last slide about the school-based staffing and getting it back to the before times, you know, before last year. That is not the same as class sizes. That is staffing per teacher. Is that correct? Students per teacher.
It's, it's correlated with class size, but it is not class size. It is a planning ratio that we use that does impact class size.
Thank you.
Okay. I will continue things moving and turn the presentation over to Mr. Kirst.
Good evening. I am Kevin Kirst, your Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services. And just to reiterate again, right, this is guestimates, good faith effort and experience in terms of a request for special education services based on some of the data that we have. So to start with, I'm going to share, this is a number of years, these are the students with disabilities that are educated in grades K through 12 in our general education environment, in our neighborhood schools. For our group of kids, I want to point out that the effect of the pandemic has been more chilling than, on our procedures than it has been prompt for an exodus, if, if I could, if that makes sense, right? So you can see from 1920 to this year, this is the state count. We do an official count on the December 1st, on December 1st of every year, that our numbers are flat. And I believe that's represented by preschoolers moving up into K-12 and our 12th graders moving out and graduating last year. But the chilling effect comes on our special education evaluation process. Now, we've had staffing put in place to keep intact our staffing standards with all our specialized programs. And that's with that projected enrollment reflects. While we didn't expend all of our staffing this year, there's an indication, you know, kids didn't go anywhere, and we're still serving kids with disabilities, and they're going to come back. Our evaluation process, we've had very dedicated special educators, related service providers, or psychologists, speech pathologists that have been evaluating children suspected of having a disability that requires special ed since school began. We've actually utilized the space over at the Center for Learning and Growth in a very safe way. And the indications there are that we are back on track, meeting timelines, and that the numbers are likely to come back to require some growth, which is what is part of the superintendent's draft budget request for 2122. In our next slide, I'd like to point out again some of the nuances because we have a population of students with disabilities that require some more intensive support and likewise intensive investment and, and financial support. And those are kids that require services outside of our public schools. And there are three groups in particular. One is, that's the, represented the kids. These are individual students now where you could imagine the, their, the data is much more sensitive when it's kid by kid versus talking in the hundreds or thousands of kids. So the orange line represents students educated over at Ivy Creek School, which is part of the Piedmont Regional Education Program. In blue are students in private day schools, represented by, those are schools that would include the Virginia Institute of Autism, Elk Hill School, Lafayette School, for examples. And then lastly, at the very bottom, are students that are served in residential programs. I want to point out that the lack of data, there's like some, hey, where are the points? They're missing there. That's because in the, the Virginia Department of Ed does not record numbers below 10. So no data points there are an indication to you that we have less than 10 students in residential programs across Virginia. It's also important to note that those are typically cooperative numbers. Those numbers include children placed in residential programs by social services that also have an IEP. So we've been very cooperative in working with social services as well. Bottom line takeaway here is those kids as well didn't exit, right? They didn't leave. And our numbers over the years have been pretty stable, which is a testament to your investment locally and the investment of our administrators and time and talent, our teachers, teaching assistants, and even general ed teachers to maintain and serve kids in our public schools. And that sort of has bucked the trend over the years, because in our next slide, just to put some context, in terms of the state, Virginia has been quite concerned about the increase in growth over the years of students placed outside of neighborhood schools into private day programs specifically. Programs specifically. Residential programs been pretty stable, but I at least wanted to give some context to over the number of years, how your investment in. Our local effort to serve children in our neighborhood schools has really paid off. For us, those kids and their families. And our next slide. Highlights. So where did COVID impact? Where did the pandemic? Hit children with disabilities and specifically it's preschool. Now, this significant dip, this is specifically to preschool children in regular early childhood programs. This is represented by children served that receive speech and language services, but attend other programs, Bright Stars Head Start, private preschool. Uh, it's also some of our models. We have six and six regular ed childhood, early childhood programs. But it's not that they left. Again, I want to reiterate the chilling effect. The pandemic has had on the evaluation process, which very much impacted our preschoolers. That again is up and running since September, but. While we're meeting timelines, there's still catch up. So we had kids move up, preschoolers move up to kindergarten, but the backfill didn't occur. Because of the delay in evaluations, we suspect based on the activity at preschool. And the number of slots that we're filling in our neighborhood schools, that we will be back on track to serve children with disabilities. At the preschool level. Uh, next year. Which, again, I believe supports maintaining what we've had in the past with a bump in growth. Predicting that we're going to be back on track for enrollment. For children with special needs. Which is summarized in the next slide. Which is, we're asking for growth of one point six six in full time equivalents. That would include a teacher and teaching assistance for our early childhood special education programs. That is preschool for children with disabilities. And three point three four full time equivalents for staffing for our K twelve special education program, which again keeps intact our. Staffing standards that have provided some really great supports and, and. Achievement for our kids with disabilities across, across the division. I want to take the opportunity to point out, since I'm here, uh, transportation request is directly impacted by our. Projections in special education. They are as a result of our projected growth. Requesting two full time equivalents for drivers. And the matching each driver with special transportation requires an assistant on that bus. So there's the match of the two full time equivalents for transportation assistance. And again, that is directly related to our. Projected growth for students with disabilities. Are there any questions? Right?
Hi. Sorry. Um, I guess I'd have a quick question on how the transition. So just to clarify, because so our participation in prep, I remember in the budget cycle last year, we talked about a decrease in our operating costs because we weren't. We reducing the payment to prep and taking on the services internally. And now we're increasing it again, just because we, we anticipated, how, how is that going? How did that go? That was the talk last year. So I guess I'm.
Oh yeah, just, so just the transition with our pre, us taking on more locally.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so um, the two areas in particular that we, I was most anxious about if I could, were. Taking over uh vision impairment services for students that are blind or visually impaired. That was a big task. We are providing the services. With some contract services with a, a local teacher that is working with our kids with visual impairments. Uh, and providing braille instruction even in the context of virtual and hybrid. So I would say things are going well there. We were able to assess what our needs are for this coming year, and that is included in, you know, what, what we have going with our special education staffing in general. So that I think is going well. Our parent resource center is up and running. We have Michael Armstrong. Leading and facilitating our parent resource center. We've just completed some parent. Training oper, parent, I want to say education opportunities with regard to snap and read and read out loud. That is our, our. Assistive technology on all our kids laptops and producing a. Uh, monthly newsletter. So that I believe is being successful. We're hearing positive feedback from our special ed advisory committee. Those were the biggest. Changes in our shift. So I, I'd say it's going very positively.
Okay, to summarize then, just make sure I heard the right thing. When we assumed all of the services that prep had been performing for us. By taking them in-house, we have been able to make sure that all of those services are still being provided for all of our students, right?
That is correct. I can confirm that, yes, there has been no decrease or cutting of special education services. As a result of us moving not all, but more services in-house. That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. If there are no other questions for me.
I'll just ask one.
Oh yes, I'm sorry.
You almost got out.
Almost.
Almost. Um, with the large dip in um, the pre K enrollment. Is part of our learning recovery going to be capturing more? Of the special ed pre K next summer or what? I'm assuming it'll be part of the bigger plan, but, and it might not be the right time to talk about it, but that's my question.
Well, Dr. I, I could at least say I'm involved in the planning and appreciate it and, and all children are, are in the planning. Like we're looking at it. It is planning phases, but um. There is no one being left out. I, I'm not getting any sense of that. But, Dr. Haas.
We were, we're really gonna, uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Curse. We're really gonna place a special emphasis on our smallest learners on the pre K kindergarten and first grade. So they're right in the forefront and in particular, special education pre K. So. Uh, Kevin's on the steering team and they're, they're right there in the, in the front of our planning.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will turn it over then to Michelle Castner, Director of Elementary Education, who will give you an update on ESOL.
Thank you, Kevin, and good evening, members of the school board. I'm Michelle Castner, Director of Elementary. ESOL and World Languages, and I'm pleased to be here this evening. Currently, I'm pleased to share that we have fourteen hundred and nine English learners. We saw a slight dip due to COVID and students who exited their monitor status. But were projected to have fourteen hundred and seventy students by the end of this year. And fourteen hundred and ninety five students by the end of next year. For our newcomers, I just wanted to remind the board that we had four hundred and four newcomers during the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. And so far this school year, we have already registered two hundred and twenty four newcomers. And the registrations are picking up every month. Newcomers are students who do not yet speak English and are new to our country. And sixty percent are concentrated in the urban ring and twenty five percent of them are in middle and high school. And these are learners with unique and complex instructional needs that require intense services in order to begin to engage with our curriculum. What is significant to note is that we currently have six hundred English learners that fall in a WEDA level one and two. And what that means is that they require a significant amount of support during the school day. You can go to the next slide. So for the reasons that we just shared, the ESOL department is proposing five F T Es. Four F T Es are to restore the cuts made for the current year. And one F T E is to support our growth and to adhere to our staffing standards. And now I just want to open it to see if you have any questions.
Ms. Castner, so with those, um, or with those proposals, we'd be able to have all of our students. Receiving services that would be comparable to what they had before the pandemic, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, could you give us a breakdown on? Where this. Where the students are coming to us from, you know, roughly, or is that too much right now?
I can get that information to you. Um, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's, it's not particularly from one area. But I can get that to you.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Ms. Castner?
Yeah.
A breakdown of. Where those F T will be allotted or, or which way, how they'll be distributed across schools?
Well, the top.
Will it just be going back to where they were before?
Well, I do want to point out that the top schools that, that receive uh, the most newcomers are Almar High School, Jewett. Greer, Woodbrook, and Mountain View. So typically. We get newcomers and many of them actually go to Almar High School and Jewett. So what we'll do is based on where the students go, we have a formula that we follow that will follow the students. So the support would follow the students, whichever school they land in.
And do you feel like we're adequately serving, and it's a broad question, but adequately serving our ESOL students? Because I know last year, um, we were talking about the need for expanding. And so I guess I'm curious if we're, if we're restoring to our previous level, if there's still a need. There's just one of those areas where there's still a need.
Well, I will say our staffing standards in Almar County um, are actually far better than what the state standards are. The state requires one ESOL teacher to every fifty three students. And on average in Almar County, we have one teacher to every thirty five students at the secondary level. And one teacher to every twenty six students at the elementary level. So I feel that our staffing standards are, are excellent in Almar County. We have a total of forty eight ESOL teachers in our division.
Thank you. And Ms. Castner, one last thing. I know you were principal of, of Agner Hurt and I'm, it's, I cannot think right now. Is it Dr. Castner? And I'm messing this up by saying Ms. Castner.
No, it's Mrs. Castner.
I'm like, I didn't want to offend.
It's all right. Thank you. I'll get that information to you, Mr. Page.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Castner.
Sure. Yeah.
Is this one of the areas in which we identified some opportunity gaps? If I remember correctly. Students were not achieving to the level that we wanted them to achieve.
Yes.
So regardless of the fact that we do better than the state requires, there's still some need for improvement there.
Absolutely. And I was specifically referring to the, the staffing standard, not that we can always do a better job with serving our students.
Right.
I guess I have one.
Oh. Sorry. Basically the same question. I mean, I had that, I was thinking that also because when I was looking up the reading data from V D O E. You know, again, we, yes, we staff very well, but we're, I'm saying the bottom five percent of divisions. For our English language learners in reading. But it also, I understand that that might not be a budget issue. So I just, I want to second that thought or third that thought, I think this time around. And just. It's, I guess, I don't know if it's for the budget cycle or for some other time, but to. Address that as a concern, just to register that as a concern.
My question is super basic. Um, for the department expenses, just so I better understand this, when we go to section E on the department expenditure, those ESOL expenditures, is that like some central, the department at central office increases there? So Paige. Fifteen maybe?
All the, what we consider a department are expenses that can't be specifically directed at a school location.
Okay.
For something like, um, an, an easy example is transportation or building services, like our maintenance workers and building services. They service the schools, the drivers drive the children to the schools, but they are not assigned to a specific school and thus we pull them together into a department.
Okay.
And so, yep, similar for the ESOL department.
Okay, I have one other question about um, the summer school program. Right now, are there any plans on the drawing board to sort of address the achievement gap problems with our ESOL students? Are any special workshops or sessions?
Oh, we're in. Right, um, in terms of academic recovery, we're in the process of working through all those details.
Okay.
Across the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Castner? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a few wrap up slides. For the remainder of the work session. So this is just a summary of the F T changes that were proposed this evening. With general enrollment, ESOL and SPED. And then, um, we look forward to the remainder of the calendar, snapshot of the calendar we have here. Next week we will discuss, we will provide an overview of our expenditures. We'll give a little bit more structure around the budget book and how budgets are built in addition to diving into expenditures such as compensation. And then, um, we will have our work session number three the following week, followed by the approval of the funding request. As I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, um, if you have any questions or concerns at any point. Please shoot us an email and we will pull together written responses. Um, and we will also include follow up items from this evening. But again, since you're newly reading the budget book, we know you may have remaining questions about today's topics as well. That's all I have. Thanks for your time and I'll turn things over back to Mr. Page.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Kumisawa. And thank, thanks again to you and Mr. Kurtz and Ms. Castner. And Dr. Haas, all of you for your presentations to us tonight. And we all look forward to the work session next week on expenditures. So do we have any other um, business from board members or our superintendent?
I just really want to thank Ms. Kumisawa for, for leading the work session tonight, uh, did an outstanding job and every year our. Budget funding request notebook gets better and that's a lot of that is her leadership making that happen. So. Thank you very much.
I don't know if it's worth, I've already talked a lot, so I'll just add on some more. I would say thank you to all the staff members that did this. I know it's, it's hard working to, and to stand in front of. A group of people and you don't know what questions are going to come your way or what's, it's hard and um, thank you. Appreciate it, all your, all your reports.
Well, in fairness, they didn't stand.
That's true. They left after.
But that, but I also appreciate the good work.
Right. Any other comments or other business from our board members? Okay, if not, we'll see you on next Thursday, February the twenty fifth. And make sure we all stay safe in the sleet and although winter misery that's going on tonight. And make sure we all stay safe in the sleet and, uh, the winter misery that's going on tonight. So thank you all for attending and also to our audience who might be listening in on this budget session. So our meeting for tonight has adjourned.
Bye, everybody, thanks.